Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council of Universal City, Texas. It is Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. Now, call this meeting to order now at 6:30 PM. And call for a form check, please.
Mayor Clinton Neville.
Here.
Councilmember Buck.
Here.
Councilmember Goulsby.
Here.
Councilmember Marion.
Here.
Councilmember Shelby.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here. According to the President, we shall proceed. The application this evening will be given by City Stat. Kristin's going to do that, and I'll leave this in the pledges afterwards. So would everyone please stand?
Heavenly Father, thank you for being the God of grace and mercy, and for loving each and every one of us unconditionally, exactly where we are. You remind us in your word that you hold tight to the broken hearted and save those who are questioned spirit. Thank you for the reassurance and the comfort that your word brings us in the times that we need it the most. We pray you protect the lives of our first responders and that you bless the leaders in this room and across the nation with the knowledge and desire to make decisions that are not only in the best interest of the people they serve, but also pleasing to you. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our collective allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I have pledged allegiance to thee, Texas, one safe, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you for coming this evening, everyone. As we begin, I would just like to have just a very short moment silence. We've had some violence in our country, and it's so sad. Sweet 16-type party to have the violence that took place there is really tragic. And I just want us to take a minute to reflect upon the fact that in many cases, there's not much we can do. We can hope, we can pray, and that's about all we can do right now. It's hoping for something someday will help stop this violence. So let's just pause for a moment to reflect upon that. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to this evening's first number, it's tab number eight, considering the minutes of the Tuesday, April 4th, 2023 City Council Regular Meeting.
Who for approval?
Second. Mayor Clinton Neville, Sacramento Mayor Clinton Neville. Any discussion on that in ten minutes? We're good? Okay, then call for the vote, please.
House Member Buck.
Aye.
Mayor Clinton Neville.
Aye.
House Member Goulsby.
Aye.
House Member Marion.
Aye.
House Member Shelby.
Aye.
House Member Vaughn.
Aye.
Well, she tested, let's move on. Okay, the next item is citizens to be heard. As you can see, it's time provided for the citizens to address council on issues or concerns. It's informative only. We don't think any discussion or action will be taken, but we really, really, really truly welcome your participation. And there this evening, there are three individuals that have signed up, and I'll call you up in the order that you sign. Mr. Richard Edwards is our first individual that signed up this evening.
Richard Edwards, 209 Trudy Lane. Good evening, everyone. Recently, five willing candidates for city council sat down for a question and answer session with a local podcasting network. They call themselves Local Texas Politics, or Texas Local Politics. Now, we all sat down individually at different times, different days, and they asked each one of us the same ten questions. One of the questions asked was if we could get rid of any one permit, what permit would that be? It was universal. It would be the permit required to repair your fence. Now, when you consider, one of the candidates is on council, but all of the candidates are campaigning. We're walk walking, we're talking to people. We have a pretty good sense of what's on people's minds. With that regarding that, as a citizen of Universal City, I would like to ask this council to make a motion to put on a future agenda, an action item, to discuss and vote on whether or not to repeal the current requirement for residential properties when mending a fence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Edwards. Appreciate it very much. Okay, next individual this evening is Mr. Ed Pickrow. May I just name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry?
Just name and address for the record.
Okay, Eddie Pickrow, 9011 Phoenix Avenue. As of 2004, moved in there, full disclosure, I'm on number eight tee box on the golf course. And the first city council meeting that I attended was 2005-2006. Sorry, it was kind of running together and stuff like that. When they were considering closing the golf course, voted to fire the management company and turned it into a beautiful, beautiful setting. The back of our lot looked like a jungle, literally. Two and three-foot weeds back there. So turned into a beautiful thing. What I'd like to talk about, now that, I mean, I don't want to talk about history so much, some of the discussions I've seen on social media are not exactly correct because golf course now has been turned into, it's operating in the black now. My pilot association, we have used it several times. The staff, catering staff, that staff is just fantastic people. Taylor is one of the best chefs in the shirt, civil, live oak, new grumples area, and stuff like that. He is just fantastic. I had to make the meeting last week, but this, to me, the briefing that the lawyer did last week, and got just a couple of copies of his slide, is this is a gold mine. That the lawyer presented this with all kinds of options, priorities, so forth and so on. So I look at the golf course and the items that the lawyer put out as all he can do is do some mining. And I hope we take time to really evaluate what he said. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next individual this evening, Mr. Bernard Lumal.
Chief, short item, Mr. Mayor of Council. 635 Upper Park Drive. Item number one is essentially just an update on consideration for the speed issues that we talked about last time. I would like to have council consider required authorities on those areas in town that have limited site issues and school zones, obviously. So those two considerations are, I think, very important for the safety of people. I'd like to see, for example, what crosswalk between Red Forest Park and the disc park because that's also a limited site area. In that case, it involves a hill. So there are some considerations for safety of people, particularly the old people that are getting from Red Forest to the disc park to walk down to the Central Creek Refuge Trail. The other item concerns the distribution. Last time, we had the venue tax book show, PowerPoint presentation. There are several items of PowerPoint presentation that are of interest. But let me just.
Hang on a second. Can we pick you up, okay? Because it's hard to hear. I want to make sure we get everything you say this rule. Are we okay?
Just give me a few more seconds.
No, no, you're fine. No, you're fine.
Okay. The first item has to deal with essentially some misconception. If I look at the state controllers' website, venue tax, it specifically states that at warrant taxes, under warrant taxes, a common municipality may not use revenue derived from property taxes for any approved venue tax project unless it's specific to enhance municipal park restoration system or undertake a watershed project, blah, 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 blah. The point here is from 2005, our city has been using a social warrant tax through general fund transfers into the golf course. So this is an addition to the venue taxes committed to the golf course. I totally agree that the golf course is good for it. It maintains the high values of our recent area, and it's great and wonderful. But the question is not that. The question is, has the city pursued a course that will maintain the golf course? The answer is not really. In fact, the PowerPoint that was handed out, in addition to my $2.2 million that I found from 20-year audits that have been transfers from the general fund to downland road funds. In this end, I see that the estimated interim fund loan is actually $2.4 million. And then, essentially, we must incorporate the part-time salaries from the state manager, finance, public works, insurance loyalty, even resources, contract management, and janitorial services. So in addition to venue tax, essentially, what this demonstrates is that we're another $2.4 million in the hole. So basically, again, it's not a question of whether the golf course isn't good and the people aren't good. It's a question of how we as a city are managing the golf course operations to the benefit of everyone. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Will. Would anyone else like to address council? Did you have a chance to sign up before, beforehand? Okay, thank you very much for everybody's participation this evening. Move on now to our business for this evening. First is tab number B. Take action to approve a contingent fee contract with Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Mott LLP. Said contract being for the collection of delinquent utility accounts owed to the city, and notice of said contract is posted with the agenda in accordance with Section 2254 of the Government Code. We do have some individuals this evening here from our organization, so I'd be glad to have you guys. We have Carlos Zarsky and Dan Roman. Gentlemen.
Thank you, there. I'll start off, and then they'll talk with you about the particulars. As you know, during the COVID period, we did have quite a few utility accounts that were deemed uncollectible. We have written that off, but we are able to go back and start collecting on those now. So we have to kind of go through the process as if we were a debt collector, which, of course, the city doesn't have the capacity to do that because we're not a debt collecting firm. So I reached out to Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Mott, who are also our warrant, do our warrant collections, to see if this was a process they could handle for us. And they said yes, that they do it for many cities. And so what you have before you is a contract to go back and start working on past due accounts. I had initially indicated that the statute limitation was four years. However, they have advised me that there is a law that allows us to go back even further if we need to. The staff were looking at how far back we need to go, and then we'll get them the data that they need. So we have that before you. And then what we'll do going forward, so that we can keep our delinquent accounts down to a minimum. If somebody is 60 days past due and we have turned the water off, then we will turn them over for collections. If we are unable to collect it, and then it will go to them, and they'll find their new address or their new phone number or whatever else that they can do, so that we can try to collect on those accounts and have minimal debt write-offs going forward. So that's the general understanding of it. I'll let you talk about the process and what you guys do. And then also, at some point, if there is a motion made, there are some written findings that you have. I believe that they need to be stated verbatim. So I included that for you on your agenda package.
Happens as part of the motion.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, please.
Yeah, of course. My name again is Carlos Zarsky. Thank you, Council, for this opportunity. We did get an opportunity to coordinate, give a layout with your team here, more specifically, what it would look like for us to come onboard coordination with your current software vendor, us getting the data, how all that would look. So in terms of this particular contract that would be presented or put forward in front of you all, would be for a two-year initial term. The way that we would go about getting paid would be 15% takeaway of whatever is brought on, whatever is collected as part of the utilities collection. So it would be a two-year initial term. It would be thereafter a one-year renewal. That could happen up to four times, depending on whether or not, you know, council felt like everything is going well, wanted to continue that. And otherwise, it would be, if you wanted to terminate it within the initial term, it would be a 30-day notice. Give us notice, 30 days, and we're out. And then in terms of notifying us thereafter, just notify us, leading up to any automatic one-year renewal, 60 days, and we're out. So very simple. We did coordinate and have posted the contingency fee language, required disclosures that need to go out in tandem with the agenda for today. That was all done perfectly. So that is set up in place for us to be able to report in conjunction, of course, with the written findings that were previously mentioned. So basically, what we're looking at here is providing that opportunity where, you know, it was just seen as, hey, we've already shut off services. At this point, what can we do to try to collect these? And, you know, thankfully, to reach out to us, we'll focus on trying to get those collected, coordinating with your team. There is a four-year statute limitation generally on debt collection, but there is, of course, under Chapter 16, a provision that allows for an exception as it relates to these particular debts. So we'll coordinate with your team to go ahead and make sure that they can collect as much of that as possible. And we're providing them with information with co-ops to try to coordinate with other cities. As, you know, services are getting shut off here, maybe if services are getting initiated somewhere else, that if there's a relationship in tandem with the entities, that there's an opportunity for them to make sure that before those services are kicked on, they take care of Universal City.
Okay, thank you. Did you want anything?
Just kind of a little bit about the process. So kind of like the court, basically, just we're working with the utilities department. We're getting information, as Carlos was saying. We're talking about account holders who are in a very big cutoff. At this point, they're just merely owed money to the city. So, you know, a big part of our process is obviously is finding them, skip tracing, getting information, mailing letters, making phone calls, reminding the account holders of their debt and trying to get money. Utilities are a little different animal in court because obviously in court, you've got warrant, you've got the power to revoke those things. So utility collections are a little bit harder animal, but there are some collectability there. But it's just basically just showing that due diligence, you know, with the city, just trying to make sure that, you know, that your account holders fulfill their obligation, you know, with the city. So, if you have any other questions?
Right, thanks a lot. Let me entertain a motion first, and then we'll open it up for discussion. And that motion needs to be written specifically under the agenda. Agenda, I didn't know the last page.
Yeah, that's good.
The written findings?
Yes, written findings.
The whole thing? Yeah. Oh, boy.
I'd like to approve.
Yep, go for it.
Is that proof?
Oh, yeah. Of course. Let me talk about the writing findings.
In an open meeting, the City of Universal City Council considered all matters listed in Section 2254-1036A-1 of the Government Code as they relate to the contingent fee contract with Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Mott LLP. The City Council pursuant to Section 2254.1036B of the Government Code hereby finds the following to be true. One, there is substantial need for the legal services specified in said contract. Two, these legal services cannot be adequately performed by the attorneys and supporting personnel of the city. And three, these legal services cannot reasonably be obtained from attorneys in private practice under a contract providing only for the payment of hourly fees without regard to the outcome of the matter because of the nature of the matter for which these services will be obtained or because the city does not have funds to pay the estimated amounts required under a contract providing only for the payment of hourly fees. The City of Universal City hereby approves the information of the contract by and between the city and Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Mott LLP for professional legal services regarding the collection of delinquent utility accounts.
Okay, that's the long version of saying that you will do the job for us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's a motion.
Second.
Second, my cousin Shelby. Any further discussion, anyone? No. Mr. Will?
Just wanted to verify, this is a two-year contract? Two years, and then it might vary afterward? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Jordan?
More the statement from the work that your firm has done for warrants and the good it's done for this city that if this goes half as well as that, I think we're in good hands.
I do.
Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Sure enough.
Could you tell me how many cities you're working for? Because what's that considered?
How many cities?
The city for utilities, well, we have five vehicles, over 200. For utilities, we do provide for 20 hours. Thank you. We're going to make taxes, yes.
Thank you. So you've got a little bit of experience?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else? All right, having heard that, it's called for the vote, then, please.
House Member Marion.
Aye.
House Member Shelby.
Aye.
Mayor Clinton Neville.
Aye.
House Member Buck.
Aye.
House Member Goulsby.
Aye.
House Member Vaughn.
Aye.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to work with you. All right, so I'm going to move Tab D and C around. I'm going to start with Tab D, then we'll move back to C later, if you have the agenda in front of you. So we're going now to Tab D, discuss and to consider Resolution 947, 2023. It's a resolution approving a project of the Universal City Economic Development Corporation as authorized by Section 505-158, as you can see, of the Texas Local Government Code and authorizing certain financial assistance to be used for targeted infrastructure located within the City of Universal City, Texas, and providing for an effective date. So Kristin, I'll turn it over to you, man.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This has been not the first time that this project has been before city council. Back in May of 2022, the EDC authorized the original scope of this project with an amount of $349,965. This project is the first phase of the thoroughfare that will provide connectivity between Kitty Hawk and Loop 1604 access road, FER, and eventually Universal City Boulevard. So since staff and Stephen Angel were coming in here to address any technical questions, since we started working on this project, the scope has had to be amended because of a few of the changes that have been made to this thoroughfare. One being that the city is negotiating to acquire some right-of-way from St. Matthew's Church, and there's potential for access at their current entranceway to the church that will provide access to that thoroughfare. So they are going to do an additional survey and need to bounce subscription for that right-of-way area. And in addition, in our negotiations with Walmart, it has been determined that there are going to be some additional improvements that need to be made to the Walmart parking lot. Basically, Walmart is losing some parking spaces where that roundabout area is going to be, and we are going to have to relocate them on the other side of the Walmart parking lot. In addition, this amended scope will include more in-depth utility coordination efforts for the cell tower and the other franchise utilities that would be affected by acquiring that right-of-way. If you look down to the cover sheet, it kind of broke down, passed by expenses. Public Works will continue to fund the project management meetings and data collection portion of the project, which totals $55,965. And the EDC would cover Task 3 through 5. That is the amended scope of the project without the supplement. So that is something that we already know that we need to fund, and it totals $89,150,000. But we are also requesting approval of supplemental expenses. These are expenses that may occur throughout the work of this project and through our negotiations with both Reunion Development to ever take that two-acre lot up in front. And in order to not make this come back in force to you multiple times, we're asking for authorization for those supplemental expenses as well. So that would put the total EDC contribution for this project to potentially $472,625, including the supplemental difference. And the authorization for tonight's resolution is not to exceed $122,625. Excuse me, if you have to address any technical issues you may have.
Jordan?
Do you have questions?
Did you want to say anything, or do you want to just raise your questions?
Just to echo what Kristin mentioned, as we have the original contract approved, you know, the St. Matthew's item came up, and also some signal, the traffic signal came up in route right there. There's some more in-depth investigative services that we need to locate utilities. But again, that item specifically, we had included as a supplement on the last one, but that wasn't approved, knowing that a lot of times that particular task is deferred because we don't know how much we need to, we can lay it out. And so again, while these items are just, you know, some of the things that came back up, and knowing that we're going to have to do it now, we're asking for approval, so.
Okay.
So after you answer the questions related to the amendment.
Okay, very good. Let me entertain a motion on the resolution, and then we'll go to the discussion.
Vote for approval.
Congressman Shelby, the motion, you have a second.
I'll second it.
Second one, Congressman Marion. All right, discussion. Yes, Mr. Will?
I question, can you help me visualize what you're saying about St. Matthews? So is there going to be two Kitty Hawk, like, curb cuts where it's going to go meet together? Or is it going to just be from the existence of light?
That commission is coming about, just trying to maintain a certain size lot for that development. You've got that cell tower, so there's an existing right-of-way on the eastern end of the parcel. So more or less, looking as an opportunity to create additional right-of-way adjacent to that development that connects into the thoroughfare. Understanding, if you see the map, thoroughfare curves around, you know, it has a big roundabout there, curves around. And you have to just add additional right-of-way along the, you'd be questioning that empty lot adjacent to the church.
So the stoplight's not going to move? You're just talking about the stoplights on Kitty Hawk won't move? It'll just be more of a, I guess, curve towards St. Matthews, kind of?
So, if I can't see them. So right now, St. Matthew's has two entryways, two churches. The entryway that's closest to the Walmart flight.
Right.
Because we're talking about the right-of-way would be basically a straight line to that cell tower. And there is potential for there to be connectivity between, so people could turn into that entranceway and connect to that two-acre retail lot right there. So it could provide access.
Does that require a bridge? Is that where the, that's where the drainage ditch is? Would you have to have a bridge over the drainage?
We're staying out of that drainage ditch.
Okay.
And that's actually the opposite side. So I think you're thinking the actual lighted entranceway. I'm not referring to that entranceway. The right-of-way is the unsignal intersection, or it's not even intersection. It's just a right-of-way into the search park.
Right, right. I think it's like the stoplight, and then there's a drainage ditch, and then St. Matthew's, right?
No, probably the other direction.
The drainage is on the other side?
Drainage ditch.
Cross from Covera.
Here's the cell tower.
I got you. So that's just all level there.
And I can show you perhaps.
I think I got it now. Thank you.
Okay. Goodness. Now, we're going to have to move to sign, or let them sign.
No, sir. We're going to incorporate an easement. That's why we keep that one right there.
Okay, anyone else?
Sure. This is a city-initiated project in preparation for future development. As you guys know, one of the biggest developments, retail-wise, that we have is going to come online in two to five years. And we actually started this thoroughfare project prior to the reunion development, specifically when we started talking about that two acres right in front of Walmart. And so the city has the responsibility to provide that access through to Kitty Hawk in 1604, and it serves the EDC and the city's best interests to provide that connectivity. So that's why we are looking at doing the infrastructure and starting that baseline.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. Let me call for the vote, then, please. Let me call for the vote then, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Shelby?
Aye.
Councilmember Najarian?
Aye.
Mayor President Neville?
Aye.
Councilmember Buck?
Aye.
Councilmember Goldsby?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
It's an improvement, it was definitely to the benefit of the city. Thank you very much. Okay, let's now switch back to tab number C, discuss and to consider resolution 948. It's a resolution authorizing an amendment to the adopted City of Universal City Economic Development Corporation fiscal year ending 2023 operating budget in accordance with Texas Local Government Code 102-010. Changes in budget for municipal purposes authorizing the city administrator, does it say that manager, city administrator? It's city administrator, city manager, to take all necessary steps to implement the provisions of this resolution and incorporating recitals, providing for severability, and setting an effective date.
Thank you again. So this budget amendment actually incorporates a few different elements, and I'll kind of like go through them one by one. First off, the revenues cover the extra expenses that we're about to go through. Steel tax revenue has increased month over month from prior year, which is important, six and a half percent. And if we look at a zero growth for the remainder of the year on sales tax, it looks like we could hit at least 1.7 million. Current EDC is budgeted at 1.5 million, so that's an extra $200,000, and revenue line that is a budget of an inch, what we can assess. And then also the extra engineering expenses that we just called for in the last added improvement, that we got, for the insurance, we are currently farming out of the thoroughfare project. And then lastly, at the last EDC meeting, the EDC approved a resolution to convert the part-time, lacking administrator position to a full-time position, and then in the budget line, there's $10,000 to incorporate that change, and this resolution will allow all of the budget amendment to be made. I may have to answer any questions about any of those.
Okay, let me entertain the motion, then we'll go on to a discussion.
Vote for approval.
Councilmember Shelby?
Second.
Second, my conscience from Goldsby. Okay, discussion, anyone? I think it's pretty clear of what the intent is here, so if there is no discussion by any, oh, Mr. Nolan, I just want to make it clear that this is money that comes from Economic Development Corporation, that does not impact the city's budget, and it could not be financed without help from the EDC, correct?
Yes, they need this money and the fund, and it's all kind of by a house, not a tax.
Yeah. I want to make it clear. Thank you. Okay, very good. Anyone else? All right, let's call for the vote then, please.
Councilmember Shelby?
Aye.
Councilmember Goldsby?
Aye.
Mayor President Neville?
Aye.
Councilmember Buck?
Aye.
Councilmember Najarian?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Move on now to the next item, which is with a no tab. We're going to have a public hearing in a minute here on PC 569, ZC 237. It's related to annexation of 3,600 East FM 1518 North and ordinance number 639B 2023, request for annexation of approximately 2.487 acre tract Orchard Park Number 1, Block 2, Lot 1A HOA. The boundaries of the city to include the land and zoning, the land R1 large lot residential to be known as the SA Renhop 2023 Annexation, binding the land to all the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city. That's a lot of terms there, but what we're going to do is I'll have the city, I'll make a presentation at first, and I'll open up the public hearing, so you have a chance to discuss this issue. So, Kim, you want to turn it over to Michael? Michael, you got it, man.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. So I just identified a partial subject property that we're talking about first, so let's see if we're clear. So we're talking about property on the other side of the creek, set up from 1518, plus the newly developed Orchard Park, essential subdivision. So we're talking about this property. All right, there. So this is a two-and-a-half acre property. Okay, I'm just going to give an overview of the proposal. The applicant is Blake Antis, and he is proposing a retail commercial center on the two-and-a-half acre vacant lot that's currently in ETJ, therefore at least to be annexed into the city property. The lot is already planted as part of the Orchard Park subdivision, the planning process, so the subdivision is not part of this, so I'm making note that. The intent for this property as part of the residential subdivision planning process is always for commercial purposes. The property itself is not an identity, it could zone. On the way forward, they're requesting, one, an annexation of a future land use plan amendment from AC Aviation Commercial to CS Commercial Services, a zone change from R1 large lot essential to PUD 2023-102 District, and finally, a preliminary and final PUD approval. But also, I want to note that, once it's annexed, it's automatically zoned to our most restrictive zoning classification, which is R1 large lot residential, which is why that has to be resold to the PUD district. Staff began working with the applicant's team back in January of 2022, talked about different use-type setbacks, access, buffering, the adjacent neighbors to the rear, which is very important in architectural design and building materials. Some specifics of the project, again, it's a retail commercial center, about 17,500 square feet, it provides 70 parking spaces, which meets the code requirements. Exterior building materials are a combination of brick, stone, and decorative concrete block. Some other development regulations include decorative fencing in the front and side yard, you can have a eight-foot fence at the rear, again, to protect those, or at least provide as much mitigation to those folks at the rear. Previous cover, 85% in the lot, they're proposing 40% to develop a low debt maximum coverage. They will have downward lighting and zero foot handles at the lot line, especially adjacent to that residential property. Distance from the building to the closest home in the back is approximately 60 feet. The building, if you look at the site plan, you can see that varies 21 feet here to the lot line, to 62, to the other side, plus you have the distance from the lot line to that whole. Landscaping, so 10% minimum on the entire property, but that 10%, 35% has to be in the front yard, and 50% in the rear. However, one staff receives the landscape plan as part of the building permit submitted. We may require additional landscaping at the rear, again, to mitigate the impact on those adjacent neighbors. A minimum 15-foot average landscape buffer adjacent to that 1518, and that crest, a combination of shade, ornamental trees, shrubs, ground cover, and supplements. They're allowed to have one monument sign, 12-foot maximum height, now measured from the foundation against finished floor. No pole signs will be allowed. As part of the original subdivision residential components, a traffic impact study, analysis plus conductive, intended to break the eventual commercial travel. What the traffic impact analysis found is that A&amp;P power, there would be additional 27 trips, with an LOS of level of service of C, and in the evening, 110 P&amp;P power with an LOS of E, while LOS and C and E are functional and acceptable levels of service. 24 legal notices were sent out for both the annexation as well as the other requests, the resiling, the PUD, and the flood amendments. We did receive one letter returned by adjacent property owner, and we did receive a call from another neighbor, both were concerned about flooding impact. Both of those residents are here tonight. Overall standards for all PUDs are required, so the applicant's private response within the application itself. We have answered those questions if you have any, this went before planning and zoning last week, and it was approved, recommendation, and 800 votes. Just a couple of other things I want to point out. What is access? So there will be no access off of 1518. Access is going to take place off of the existing Mandati Crest that goes into the residential subdivision. They did, and they will elevate the site in order to take that developable pad outside of the 100-year flood plain. The applicant's engineers are here to address any of those questions that you may have regarding flood plain issues, as well as to that.
Okay, so the first thing we'll do is I'll open up the public hearing, so you all can comment on that, and then when we close the hearing, then council will have a chance to address this stuff. It is now, what, 7:10, open the public hearing right now? Would anyone like to address this issue? I'll be for council.
Did I hear him right? There is not going to be access for 1518 incident?
Come on up. Yes, the-- I believe that's the statement that he made, there would not be access off of 1518.
Okay, it looks like there's a driveway entrance going to 1518. Am I seeing that well?
That's existed.
Is this 1518 right here? What it says right there?
Charles Cameron.
Hey, let me explain. So right now, there's currently access off of Mandati Crest off of 1518--
Uh-huh, okay.
So it would be no additional access off of 1518. Turnaround for fire apparatus--
Oh, okay.
--before this match. So this is where the traction closure is located currently for the site plan. That may change, but for the moment, it will be there. Wanted to ensure that they had enough maneuverability for emergency services.
Okay. So, so this is a street going into the neighborhood. And is that, now, I'm not that, is that where that traffic body is? From 1518 going into that neighborhood?
No, there's traffic going this way.
Okay.
Attended.
So that is a residential street going right there.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Take your time, take your time.
Let me just hint in my comments. Let's bring it to you. First of all, I'm sorry, I didn't sign any of the speaker. I did not know that I was--
It's perfectly fine, yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Gilson. I own 1518 across the street from your land, from your plants there. I own 17 acres along the creek, and right across from there is my oldest home, but pretty, when I'm heavy, heavy rains. I am in, annexed to St. Martin's, and your both sites--
Right.
--to me, but I was wanting to ask you, please, I have been in school, I just not knowing of what the financial, that are not one of the ones that call finance, but I'm concerned about flooding, I'm concerned about what affects or what future use or traffic or how it's going to affect my land. There's nothing on here, it's just, there is the plant, and it floods pretty bad right there. By there racing their land, I think that will affect much of the water staying on my site. So can somebody tell me your plans that you're talking about tonight, how will they affect me? And furthermore, in the future, are you considering anything else that is going to affect my land? At one time, when we bought 30 years ago, there was a road from 1518 right credit to Universal City, that Universal City used to maintain for the mail and access, and you basically did not, and so it looks like you already did. But I'm thinking that the people that are going to get there sure would like to get to get to Universal City, and I prefer to go around 78 or 35. Are you all considering any, of any, any access to that, that would impact my land?
Appreciate that. This is not, this is where you give input to us, ma'am. We don't, we don't give you the feedback right now, but I will allow a discussion related to the city on this particular issue. Not about, not about the access, but your concerns about flooding--
The impact on--
Yes, ma'am.
--on my property.
Yes, ma'am.
If you do have plans, I know I'm not in Universal City, but I would like--
It's okay, you're a neighbor. You're a neighbor, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Cool. I'll be in there.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Michael, if you want to address that real quick?
Let the applicant's engineers address that.
Okay. Please.
The mayor, council, my name is Chris Jake, you're crewed engineers. Our H&amp;H team has analyzed this property, this project in particular. We run both a pre and post-condition scenario, where we run a model showing the effects of the additional material to develop property, and the results of that analysis show that the project proclamation does not have any impact to the neighboring properties, both upstream or downstream. In fact, the only change in water surface elevation within the mapping, as you can see, is just on the retail strip, commercial lot itself. There's no changes to any of the mapping, both upstream and downstream, when looking at the pre and post-condition project. So, questions to that, or--
We've got those in a few minutes. Does that help, ma'am? What did he say?
In part of hearing, I think what you said is there would be no damage, any effects to my plan?
That's correct. The water surface elevation in our modeling shows that with our development, even with our development, the water surface elevation does not rise upstream or downstream of this project. The pre and post-condition scenario, so we have also go through like a plumber process, which has been approved by the county, and the city's also approved that analysis as well, and that it shows the details of what I'm saying here, but the pre and post-conditions, like I was saying, are both the same with our development on the ground. So there's, there's no impact to you, to your property as far as the water surface elevation rising.
There is a large new sewer, big sewer, I was put behind my property, and goes up to the top, of course, I understand she's seen me, and we're not using that, I gave them a nice one on it, so that's not the news, but I heard a little bit about maybe Universal City has plans of using that, but--
I can't speak to that, no, ma'am, I have no word.
That sewer, it's clear, it's--
Yes, ma'am.
--and in purpose.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure of any additional points to that.
No.
I still want to call the hearing portion, Najarian, and I'll from the public, so ready, please. I think-- All right. Mr. Neville, do you think on the meeting?
Yeah, I'll post the public vote, public reading at 7:15. We call it a council action. I move for approval of this resolution, Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
Second.
Any other discussion? Mr. Goldsby?
Thank you, sir. Michael, we had the, the traffic impact analysis was done in 2019, and has it been updated at all in the last?
No, it has not. So the 2019 numbers, it's the same report, because it incorporated both residential and commercial elements.
Okay. Is there any, I'm just curious, because after, after so many years, a lot of times we're allowed, or we're required to submit a letter along instead of a, instead of a whole new traffic impact analysis. whole new traffic impact analysis. Any, anything like that done as far as the total trips modified at all?
No, updated models, not different.
Thank you, thank you.
Another question. Mr. Philby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. What did I say? Sorry, thank you, sir. That study, was that a third party that did that? Or was that some, was that an internal department?
We're still in the commentary?
No.
Oh, we've got, good, thanks, sir.
Hold on a minute. Okay. We are a third-party consultant, H and H team to, to qualify the analysis.
Okay, and then the city, we, we looked at that as well?
Our engineer looked at it, well, the county looked at it, and the city looked at it, and at some point FEMA has looked at it as well. So we have five, five agencies.
Okay. And then whoever can answer this, I want to clarify, the blue in this, is that the hundred-year floodplain in the blue?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't realize it went that far into the neighborhood. And the back of this building, the drawing doesn't show up, but I'm assuming from what I saw in the drawing, there's no doors on the back of the building to enter into the retail space?
For, well, I, there's, there's.
I guess we have that drawing?
I guess not. But there wouldn't be, I presume there would be any access to shopping centers, there may be some exit doors or such?
Right, that's what I think, most retail shops usually have a drive along the back. And I didn't see a drive on this drawing.
So there's no intention to have a drive.
Okay, then just take it for the residents in the back, you know, more doors, people going in and out of them. So that is not a part of.
Maybe limits, is there maybe some doors, like a truck or a, a, maybe.
Like maybe a emergency door or emergency.
Yeah. They have that part of the building there, or maybe part of the building for us.
Do we have any leeway on, I mean, I guess if a fire was stamped around here, we have two exits. So I mean, like as soon as we have doors back there, when people go in and out back there, that bus up against the neighborhood, we're talking about, I know it's what, 60 feet in some places?
The closest point is 60 feet. Again, these homes varies.
Yeah, I'm looking at the homes from the satellite view, so I can, I mean, they're, I'm just thinking, you know, people using those to bring stuff in, take stuff out, through the back of the building.
And that's one of the reasons why the ordinance is worded the way it is, to allow for staff to acquire additional landscaping, to increase the buffering if needed. And that's the form of the BRRRR, drawing trubs, trees, fencing.
Okay, I understand the noise, noise from people going out there, hanging out there. But I don't know what kind of retail we're talking about. This is retail that's going to be late, you know, some reason we have to lay, or it's always going to be a private hotel.
Yeah, more than likely this is going to be your local service retail center. It's going to have maybe a dry cleaner, restaurants, closing at nine o'clock, or that sort of thing. But there is a list in Exhibit D of the ordinance for the P and P identifies all of the proposed potential uses.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, two questions. Number one, getting back to Mr. Gilson's question, this project was, it says to be elevated to counteract, you know, the flood zone. What type of elevation is this going to need? I can't really read this for myself, but how far up is that going to have to go to specifically legally get you free of the floodplain?
The retaining wall would be between eight and 10 feet tall along the, along FM 1516 to get the site up and out of the floodplain.
So it's not raising of the earth, it's, it's actually a retaining wall, same elevation?
Well, there'd be a retaining wall along 1516, you know, along this area here, and then this wall will be filled up behind the wall to elevate the, the site. So the finished floor of the building and parking lot area would be up above the 100-year water foundation.
Do we know how far up that would be?
I believe it's between the epicaries across the site, but I believe it's about 10 feet, 80 feet.
Okay, thank you. I have one other question, let me get to where I needed to be.
I just also clarify that the public hearing was closed at 7:18. We're now in the discussion by council.
Right, okay. Michael, Exhibit D, you were just talking about, stiff uses, commercial uses. Now, I see here on the very top one, which is permitted, is daycare services, and on the bottom of commercial uses is cocktail lounge. And a little further is a possible liquor store. Now that, I know that cocktail lounge shows as a specific use permit, which is nice to know, but can we, would we even want to venture having those two things in the same place? I mean, if you have one, wouldn't you not be able to have the other?
I'm sorry, it's predetermined what the market's going to call for. It's, if we exclude one, we're going to hear the potentialities. So this gives us an option. In there, you know, state law, there's not a distance requirement for a daycare center, there is for a public, like a school, or church, and for hospital, so.
But not specific for that.
For daycare, commercially.
But then, I'm just going to put a, so if, 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 daycare is permitted there, so say, just saying what if, so we approve a daycare center for that, if a cocktail lounge or something of that sort wanted to come in, he would have to come to the council to be approved for a specific use permit? Thank you, sir, that's all I have.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question on that permitted list. A second, flash vote passed and we'll get you back. Gas station permitted on the third list. Yes, but the power washes and that require a specific use.
No, I, I, that's not in the plan, is that in the thoughts for this? I know we have a drawing that does not look like a gas station can go in there, but.
And so the reason why, we tried to make this actually exhaustive to anticipate any potentiality, because of all the calls that we get for other projects, we understand that it's better to put it in there, allow for that use, so they don't have to come back. And that's my four questionable ones that, you know, council will not consider, who applies a specific use permit.
Do we have, I, I don't know, I, I think we should be able to decide whether, I guess the secondary option of whether we put a gas station right behind all those houses. We had a big conversation when they put the one over off of Cimarron in 1976, there was a lot of concerns at that time about lights, and there was additional purposes that limited that because it was so close to the residence. I guess my question is, obviously I'm just one voice up here, but do we have the ability to change that from a permit to a specific use?
Yes, in your motion, we have to state that specifically.
Okay. Which we already have a motion, right?
I don't.
No, yes, I don't.
Did you guys make a motion?
I don't remember, I have the motion, but I don't know if the second is, I didn't catch that.
Who made the motion? Mr. Jerry, who seconded it?
No, I was seconded.
Oh, you seconded, Mr.?
I don't remember if it's in full parts. The only thing that we're discussing right now.
This is the annexation.
If you want to change that, whether it's before or after.
That's, that's fine, it's just in this part, so we're talking about it.
Each one of these areas is related to the exact same acreage, every one of them. Okay, this first one is annexation, so what's before is, is approving the annexation.
You gave me a piece of paper in this tab, so I can talk about it. Anyway, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Again, we're looking at the annexation on this part of it, and we'll have three more public hearings related to this as well. So, so will you have a motion and second then?
Yes, sir.
All right, any other discussion on the annexation proposal? All right, call for the vote then, please.
House Member Buck.
Aye.
House Member DeJerry.
Aye.
Mayor Potts and Neville.
Aye.
House Member Goldsby.
Aye.
House Member Shelby.
Aye.
House Member Bond.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. I know this is kind of confusing, but we have to look at it from all different aspects of this property. So it looks like there's going to be four hearings, but they're all, all related to the very same annexation. So move on to the tab number two, which is another public hearing, PC 563, is a request for an amendment to the future land use plan. So this changes the annexation now to a future land use plan for an approximately 2.487 acre tract in the same, in the same actual address. And so that's what we're going to do right now. So I'll open up the public hearing, anyone want to make any other comments related to this particular issue? And now, now we're looking at changing the future use plan to this annexation that was just approved by council. Anyone want to address council on this particular issue? I think it's, it's fairly, this is the process we have to go through every time, so it's not unusual to have these multiple sessions, but that's, that's the way we have. So if there's no discussion, we'll just close the public hearing and we'll open up, is anyone?
If you could shake the time that you're opening.
Oh, yeah. I opened it at 7:29, closing it at 7:30. All right, any discussion by council then on, on this item? Okay, so then we'll move on then to tab number F, which is discuss and consider the ordinance amending that future land use plan, exactly all we discussed before.
Good to agree.
Councilman Shelby.
Second.
Second one, Councilman DeJerry, discussion? All right, call for the vote, please.
House Member Shelby.
Aye.
House Member DeJerry.
Aye.
Mayor Potts and Neville.
Aye.
House Member Buck.
Aye.
House Member Goldsby.
Aye.
House Member Bond.
Aye.
Again, this is the process, it's, it sounds confusing to you, but really it's the way the process needs to go. All right, so the next item is again another, tab number three, another public hearing, this time it's related to a zone change from R1 Large Lot Residential to PUD 2023 District for an approximately 2.47 acre tract located at the same location. So this, now we're talking about a zone change, same exact property. So I'll open up the public hearing at 7:31. Anyone want to discuss it? Okay, let's close it at 7:31, 10. All right, so let's go on now to tab number four, which is another public hearing, PC 565, it's a request for approval of the PUD preliminary final plans for an approximately 2.47 acres tract, located at the same address, and it's presuming ordinance 581. So this is another public hearing, again, related exactly to the same issue. Anyone want to make any, any further comments about it? Anybody? Okay, that was open to at 7:32 and close at 7:32, 10. All right, so let's move on to tab number G then, which will be to discuss and consider the ordinance amending the zoning map. And all the other items pertain exactly the same way we discussed those other issues, so this, this is not related to the zoning map. So I'll take it, I'll take a motion and then we'll have a discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve with the amendment of changing the gas station from a permitted use to a specific use.
Okay, there's a, a second motion and, and a second, with this stipulation put into it. All right, any discussion, anyone? Are we good? Have Phil?
Does this cause our engineer any heartburn?
I would just, I guess, give some clarification on that, the concerns for the gas station.
Well, I like, I like your, I mean, so I guess I'll, it's your turn to talk, so I kind of. I just, I just wanted to hear, I just wanted to hear his feedbacks to that.
Sure.
Turn it back to you, Mayor.
I, I don't think there's any concern to that. I think this list, like Matt was mentioning, is, our client obviously doesn't know the market, you know, what the market brings, so they want just some options to choose from, depending on who they ultimately sell to. So that's kind of the approach here, but I guess just wanted to make sure.
I, I, yeah, no, I'd be, I'd be glad to, if, if I could, at the floor. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here's my thought process on it, I want to see it before we, I want to see it before you guys just go ahead and put something in there. And I, I think that's, it gives us a chance to talk about it before we just haul up and put a gas station next to those four houses, I'm sorry, I think it was five. I'm not, I'm not saying we move it to a, it's not allowed in the list, I'm saying we put a checkpoint in there for it comes back to council, so we get to look at what, how it's going to look, what's going, how it's going to affect the, the houses behind it, and what those citizens can expect. As opposed to, hey, we showed you a retail park with a parking lot, no doors on the back, you know, pretty, pretty separated business from the residential area to, hey, I'm going to put a gas station in, and because it's in there, I can just go ahead and do it. No, that's fine, I just wanted to, I guess, understand where, where your thoughts are coming from, so if, if it is an option that's presented to, to us to permit, that we have always kind of had those thoughts on the forefront and considerations when presenting something.
Yeah, I mean, this, it really comes down to, it's just an extra checks and balance on what goes in, because it would be substantially different if presented, understood?
Okay.
Thank you. Everybody understands the motion and the second, this particular issue. Good, any other discussion, anyone? All right, let's call for that vote, please.
Does Councilman DeJerry, the one who seconded?
Yes, yes.
House Member Shelby.
Aye.
House Member DeJerry.
Yeah, aye.
Mayor Potts and Neville.
Aye.
House Member Buck.
Aye.
There must be something in the water we're drinking tonight.
Aye.
House Member Bond.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. It's, it's, it's a long, long process, but you have to go through all of it with, with all these different public hearings, there's a rationale for that because they're related to different aspects of the approval process. So thanks for sticking around with us on this, on this issue. That closes our business for this evening, so I'll turn it over now to our city manager for her comments.
Thank you, Mayor and council, I appreciate it. I just want to let you know that your staff is working on the budget. We will in the next couple of days be posting the entire budget preparation schedule on the website. I do ask that you now mark off the date of Wednesday, July 12th, that will be the long meeting that we'll have. We've tried, it's only, also the only date in the budget process that we will have a special meeting date. We've done all of the other budget preparations, so it'll actually land on a council day for you, because we recognize that a lot of you work and it's very hard to take off from work. So please mark off your calendars for Wednesday, July 12th, starting at 5:00 PM for your long budget work session. In addition, early voting starts on Monday, May 6th is election day, which also means it's pancake breakfast day at the fire department from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and the fire department is very much looking forward to having all of you stop in and have pancakes, sausage, coffee, and orange juice. No scrambled eggs, but lots of pancakes. Also, I wanted to let you know that the food truck park, which is scheduled for the aviation district, did receive their temporary certificate of occupancy today. If you go by and look at it from the outside, it kind of looks like not much has happened. There are still some big apparati for the outdoor area that hasn't, yes, apparati, it's plural for apparatus, Mr. Shelby. Apparati that has not arrived, that will be arriving soon, that you'll see that goes up. So they are intending to be open sometime the mid or third week of May, so we look forward to having a ribbon cutting for them. Also, we call it summer reading, we really should call it summer party. It's going to kick out June 10th for the library, so the library staff has done something a little bit different this year for spring, summer reading and summer events. Not only do they have reading programs for kids and teens, but they've also started an adult reading, summer reading program, and they have a lot of adult events established as well. Now, I don't know if this one is for adults, but on the kickoff day, they are going to have a foam party in the parking lot, bubble foam, so if you're a big kid at heart, you should join them on June 10th. Spring cleanup is going very well, last weekend was our first one, this upcoming week, Thursday through Sunday, is the last days, and so if you have any household items that you would like to get rid of, this is your chance to do it. We won't be back again until late in the year, in the fall. Also, Randy and his staff has been working very hard on the Cimarron Park remodel. We expect completion of that project at the end of May, that will soon be followed by the Red Horse Park and Veterans Park and every other park that we have under construction. We did have a bid opening today, since we were talking about the ETJ, and it was brought up, for the service road from Universal City out to the ETJ or FM 1518. Now, again, I say a service road, for is emergency for services personnel only, so that we can maintain adequate service to the residences and the businesses that are in that area. It will not be open to the public. And then the last thing, I know we have a lot of cameras in there at the special meeting for the venue tax, because we are testing cameras, Regina and her staff, one, which is Regina, is back again today, working on that and testing a couple of cameras. Also, we're doing static display as well as we. Also, we're doing static display, as well as we have streamed this video live for the first time, so that we can get an idea of what equipment we're going to need and the quality of it. And so, you know, getting a peg channel is about a 75-step process. We started on it before COVID. Of course, had a complete halt during COVID. So we have about four steps left, so it's very close to being done in our near future. And so you probably should get used to seeing the cameras in here, and at some point we will be working on monitors and the microphones as well, so that there is better sound quality, and perhaps some lighting as well. So that's all I have for this evening, Mayor.
Sure, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, what's that with you?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Buck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everybody ready for their history lesson?
Yes, sir.
April 18th of 1961, this council, that was 63 years ago, 62 years ago, council approved the first plat in Unit 1 of the Northview Park subdivision. The developer of Northview was Mr. John M. Schaefer. I reached out to Ollie to see if she is, if they are descendants from those Schaefers. Sounds like they are not. In April 1962, the census directed by this body determined that the total population of Universal City was 2,585. And the city's first water bills were made out, mailed out to residents with the postmark of April 27th, 1963. And that's all I got, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to, I'd like to tell everybody where I get my history information from. This is not me, like, combing through the archives of Universal City here or anything like that. I go straight to the person that's already done all of that, and that was Mr. Mike, Michael Hoffman, and he had the help of Jerry and Cecilia in compiling all of that. It's available at HoffmanHistory.com for anybody that would like to look it up for themselves. It's an interesting read and helps me learn a little bit about Universal City, so that I can try to be a better council member sitting up here, to know where, know where the city has come from and try to figure out where it's going from, where it's going to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Buck. Snow?
Thank you. Just one thing, history, 61, the state April 18th, 1942, that Billy Mitchell, Senator Crowe took off with 16B25, bombed Japan. And for a big action in the world of war, this is a big, that's, it was a big action. Absolutely. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, I don't know if I'm pronouncing this right, is it Gilson?
Yes.
Ms. Gilson. Yeah, just, I hope you, I thank you for coming and speaking tonight, and I hope you got a couple of your answers, we got a couple of answers, and if not, maybe we can talk after. And just thank everybody else for coming, that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm hearing you. I missed when you asked for this question, but I offered you coming, since I live there. I know the area, I know a lot of what happened there, and I'm concerned about when I come in the future.
Ma'am? Ma'am? Yes.
Not a lot of families.
Yes, your ma'am.
A lot of children and a lot more traffic. But I have a chance, I would suggest, ask, are there any plans in the future for traffic like that? There's one in Atlanta, but there's none, and I sit in my crib and I see lines of cars from Street 35. Might want to consider a traffic light. Because I drove by there, particularly, or I had money, I knew I had to look at what it was we were talking about. That entrance is a subdivision, it's a side for the neighborhood, but for commercial stores, delivery trucks, all that, 15 feet or 16 feet, and which makes there, has an access on the back of it, doesn't sound like very much, and I want to reconsider that. And I'd have to know if there's any plan in the future to open up another access to 1518. If you put a service station, how's it going to get in here? Except maybe through 1518. It's very easy to pass a little something and come back later and make it there. So I'm concerned about that. And I'm asking, are you, are there any plans for any fencing in the front to kind of, take advantage of the noise like they do in the neighborhood? Across my house, if the fence, the fence, and it really helps with the noise, and with the children being able to stay in there and being safe from the traffic. And I believe right across from, the drawing, I think, my road, my property, it's snowed and there's a sharp curve on 1518. And how many months they go by, and we don't have cars fly right off 1518 into my property. The whole part that looks like it's right across this area here, so somebody might want to go there and put some fencing or, or something. It does, my property goes right into the trees, right into the tops of the trees, with kind of few deaths, death, or is it very dangerous? So somebody might, this is going to be there, that gets to see that, some areas, some concerns for the leaders to have in mind for the people that actually are getting...
Yes, ma'am.
...fucking about, your people, I don't know anyone from this side.
Yes, ma'am. We'd be glad to discuss that with you after the meeting. You have some very interesting comments.
The traffic now has really improved in a big place. Commercial fencing is going to increase, and 1518 is not that well.
It could be a future textile project. I totally agree with you, ma'am. Definitely.
These are things I want to improve.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Okay.
I'm good, thank you, ma'am.
Phil?
Thank you, Mayor. My wife tells me that there's been a lot more activity on the Facebook page, including the agenda for this evening, so I don't know who's responsible, but kudos, love to see more of that. It's unfortunate, I think Mr. Pickrell just left. I'd love to discuss the golf course with him. If anybody else would like to discuss the golf course, I'd be happy to do that after the meeting. And Mr. Edwards is a man after my own heart, talking about fence permits. So I would like to post that out. Would anybody like to talk about fence permits to the future agenda?
Should I have a fence? So I think, I wouldn't mind having a fence permit or a fence permit discussion, to determine if we need to make something, we could make action at one time.
All right, let's, we'll consider that then. All right, consensus, you guys want to? All right.
I'm on board for discussion of any type.
How you, Matt?
William?
I'm good, thank you very much.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Just a couple of quick items. I've been getting some phenomenal comments about the cleanup. Randy, your team, they're all just friendly, they're accommodating, they're going over, they're going above and beyond, and this is something that we provide for our citizens that many cities do not. And we're just, we're just, we have a great relationship with waste management that's helped, that helps tremendously. And so I just want to be kudos to you and your team for this, because it, it looks like it's real simple to us, but to you guys, it's a lot of work. So congratulations. Any other thing I can say? Fiesta starts on Thursday, so viva fiesta, have a great time during Fiesta and be careful. Okay? Thank you very much this evening, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.